All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to session this, uh, meeting. Call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Cersei.
Here.
Great, thank you. Um, I don't think there's any additional items, uh, for this evening looking, um, ahead, next Wednesday, or, uh, which will be on Wednesday, May 16th. We will have our update from our youth council. Then we will have, um, the second reading of our 2019 tax rate, the 2019 stormwater management budget, and the 2019 budget. We'll have a resolution setting policy regarding the level of the city's general fund, general fund unassigned fund balance. Um, we have a work session on that this evening. We have a first reading ordinance approving traffic calming on Fifth Avenue between Orchard Avenue and Eastern Avenue, and we tentatively have scheduled resolutions for appointments to, um, committees. Our work session next week, um, tentatively is investment advisor presentation on socially responsible investing, and, um, it is cited on the, uh, um, city website as a discussion of the draft resolution regarding Tacoma Junction site plan. I want to spend a moment and speak to that. Um, we will not be discussing the draft site plan, uh, draft resolution next week. We're going to, um, have a work session on Tacoma Junction to look at some of the key areas that we still want to consider, the trade-offs, um, things like the public space, uh, trash and recycling and how all that's going to work, and a number of other things that we have, um, been discussing. And so that will be a work session. Um, we are still awaiting the lights at the junction to basically settle down. Um, the traffic studies have been done, the counts have been done, the final analysis is waiting for those lights to settle down. And so, given that, we are looking for a vote on Tacoma Junction to happen on the site plan in early June. As soon as I have more information, we will set the actual time, but right now, we're looking at early June. So next week will be a work session on, um, the site plan, and then hopefully, uh, very soon, we'll give you an update and more definite, uh, dates on the, uh, what shall we call it? On the actual voting on the resolution. Um, while we're on it, since we're on, talking about Tacoma Junction, um, myself, Councilwoman Dibala, and Councilwoman Kostic just, uh, left a meeting with representatives from the Tacoma Park Co-op, and we had, um, an excellent meeting. Um, so I'll just leave it at that for now, but I think it was a very good meeting, talking about, um, next steps, um, some of their, uh, their needs and how, uh, the city can help, uh, facilitate moving forward. So I would just want to thank the board chair, Rachel Hardwick, um, and everyone who, uh, came this evening, and I'm looking forward to continuing that conversation. So, that leaves us May 16th. Um, moving forward then, the next council meeting will be May 23rd. Our voting session that night will be the second reading ordinance approving traffic calming on Fifth Avenue between Orchard Avenue and Eastern, uh, and tentatively a presentation on the Purple Line. At the moment, the council is not scheduled to meet on May 30th. Again, we'll kind of see how things go with Tacoma Junction, but right now, we are scheduled not to meet on May 30th. Then on Wednesday, June 6th, this is important, listen up, we will not be meeting here for our regular Wednesday meeting. Um, we will be having our meeting at the Tacoma Park Rec Center on New Hampshire Avenue. Um, and that evening so far, um, on our agenda is a proclamation for Immigrant Heritage Month. Um, and so, just keep that in mind, don't come here in June 6th. Um, so that's our agenda moving forward. Uh, we will now take, uh, public comments on, uh, voting items. The first voting item is the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 tax rate. So if you have public comments on that, please come to the podium.
Thank you. Paul Hubner, Carroll Avenue, Ward 3. Uh, I'm here to comment and say thanks, most especially to the newer women members of the council, and whoever else finally negotiated a decrease in the tax, in the property tax. For me, I started work when I was 10 years old and paid for school and work for 55 years. Raised in some of the poorer neighborhoods in Northwest DC, I struggled and fought so I would not be poor again as an adult. But concurrent with my struggles to succeed, I was given the very great gift of compassion, and I've always tried to work with those who also struggle in our society. My perception of the insidious oppression of gentrification, especially confined with the present national administration, is twofold. First, over 55% of bankruptcies are the result of medical expenses. Yet many older Americans caught between utilities, property taxes, and home bills forego their medicine and treatments to stay in their homes, beginning a dangerous downward spiral. Second, and alternatively, housing and stemming homelessness are seen as a seminal step to reintegrate veterans, returning ex-offenders, displaced back into mainstream society. So to, the step you have taken to decrease property taxes is a meaningful way to help people stay in their homes and stem the tide of gentrification and the unintended consequences of forcing many of the most needy people who have helped pay for and built our community in their homes. Thank you very much, and thanks for all the late nights. I'm at home, but I know a quarter to 12:00 looks like. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right, any other comments on the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 tax rate?
Hi, Kelly Skelton, Ward 6, uh, 7506 Glenside Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you guys again. Really enjoyed the last council meeting, but, um, I guess I still wanted to make sure that the council is aware of my concern about the reserves and fully funding them. There's, I, I mean, I loved the summary and our voting, your voting item for tonight, but when we decrease our reserves by over $6 million, I start getting a little bit concerned. And I understand that we're not fully aware of the implication of, you know, we've never, we haven't lived through the implications of the new tax regulations on individuals, and I, so I appreciate the council's caution and thinking for our very varied community, but per capita, is it really going to save individuals that much? I mean, I know we're making a gesture, but in each family, if we just at least held the tax rate at where it is currently, could we not continue to just sustain that level? Because this will be the second year in a row that Tacoma Park has decreased taxes and decreased their reserves, and there are some projects that we're still funding, um, and we're not even sure maybe necessarily exactly how much it's going to cost, like the library, um, that we feel are important to do for this community. So, maybe we can't fix it this year, but is there a way to create a fund to help older residents, lower-income residents, you know, manage the tax rates at the level that they are this year? I, I, there's probably not time to fully delve into that now, but we want to maintain the community we have here. We want to maintain diversity, but we also want to maintain healthy finances. And so, I would like the council to consider how we can do both of those things, because maybe it's not, I mean, it's not like I'm rolling it, I'm not. I work for a nonprofit in Tacoma Park, um, and I have two kids that are in daycare, both in Tacoma Park. Um, so, you know, it's, I don't have extra money, but I would like to see a, a sustainable community, and part of that is financial security. So, I see you, nothing. Thank you, appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 tax rate? Next, we have the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 stormwater management Next, we have the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 budget. No other public comments on our voting items. Um, before I open it up to general public comments, I see a few more folks have joined us this evening, and I just wanted to, um, let people know that, um, I mentioned when I was going, uh, over our agenda for the future, that next week, we will not be having a work session on the resolution, the draft resolution for the Tacoma Junction site plan. Instead, that will be a work session, uh, to continue our conversation regarding a number of the, uh, questions that the council has raised, um, to get more clarification, and also to discuss trade-offs on different things such as public space and traff, not traffic, but, um, trash and recycling. Um, we will likely vote in, um, early June on this. Um, the reason, um, we're looking at early June is, as many of you know, the traffic lights timing in the junction are still not where they should be, they're not settled, they're not finalized. So, these traffic studies are done, but the final analysis, um, is still something that the traffic engineers are looking at, and so, um, we hope to have that once the lights are settled. In addition, um, as I announced before, uh, myself, Councilwoman Dibala, Councilwoman Kostic, um, sat down with Rachel Hardwick, the, uh, board chair of the Co-op, and other representatives of the Co-op, just right before this meeting, and had an excellent meeting with them, and discussed a number of, uh, issues and concerns they still have, and, um, they're going to, um, go back, talk to their board members, um, and we're looking forward to continuing the conversation, um, in the future. And so I would just say that that was, um, a great conversation we had, and I'm glad we were able to do that. Um, so with that, I will open it up to, uh, general public comments. Any public comments on anything anyone wishes?
Good evening, council members. Uh, this is Cricket. My name is Eric Sepler. We both work at Kinetic Artistry in Tacoma Park. Uh, although we have a small audience here, I'm sure we have people on TV, because that's how we see our, our city functioning, and, yeah, we'd like to talk about the, uh, it's not a very long list, but it, it's about, it's about what we have experienced for our 46 years in existence. Kinetic Artistry goes back, one of the oldest companies in Tacoma Park. Now, none of you have come to small business like myself to ask about what we thought about the development across the street, how it was going to affect us. Uh, if I may, uh, address the folks here, Kinetic Artistry is directly opposite from the parking lot. That parking lot has been forever. Uh, so the city needed to do something with it. We put out a request for proposal, and the Neighborhood Development Corporation said, "We can do exactly what you want." Well, the artists' conceptual drawings that were shown to us, in my business, I can't put a proposal in and put conceptual drawings, I've got to show them sizes, spaces, dimensions. Hence, when you promise somebody that they're going to do something, and then they give you what you didn't really, that's called bait and switch. I feel that we've been captive with a bait and switch. Uh, the Co-op was just talked about. When John Lennon wrote a song, he couldn't figure out what to call it, what to title it. He went to his mother, "Mom, I don't know, what do I call it?" She said, "Son, just let it be." So with the, with the Co-op, the Co-op is a successful business. You've heard legions of people swear by the Co-op. So let, let us support it, let it be. Now where do we go from there? We go to the traffic. Okay, now, now Mayor, you just mentioned about the traffic studies. We're talking about, what, trucks, trash, parking. I've got 30 seconds.
I have 50 minutes.
You'll give me more? All right, that's fine.
It's three minutes per person, please.
Okay. In front of my shop, we got a state road, we have a, a right-turn-only lane. If one vehicle goes, "Oh, I want to go straight, not right," the people behind them honk their horns, wave their fists. I've seen it for years, and now we're bringing all this traffic into the city, we're not prepared for it. Um, I'm not saying that this will pass or fail, I'm saying it deserves an "I," which means incomplete.
Thank, thank you.
I think you understand. Cricket is practically speechless about it.
I wish I had Cricket myself.
Hi, um, my name's Megan Scribner, I live on Willow Avenue in Ward 1. Though sometimes things are a bit heated here, I still believe that the two sides are not that far off. The key here is size. By having a smaller development, we could have it all, new restaurants, businesses, public space, and the Co-op, and not exacerbate traffic and safety problems. I believe what we need is mediation with the Co-op, NDC, members of the council, and a broad cross-section of the community representing all sides, sitting down and working out what we need and want for this space and how the best to address this. Some may say this is going back to the drawing board, but I don't think that's a bad thing, especially if it helps us to get this right. Speaking of drawings, this is my little segue, they say that picture is worth a thousand words, and it seems that is true, as NDC has drawn many pretty pictures to convince us that this latest design is the way to go, and that it won't cause any of the issues that concern many of us. But the problem is that the renderings used by the developer and the city staff to sell the development is that they're not drawn to scale. Now that may be standard developers' practice, but even if it is, it's wrong. It's disingenuous to have us, you, approve designs based on drawings that aren't based on facts. How can we really ascertain the impact or even the benefits if we aren't given the accurate details? I also know why, want to know why NDC changed the design from three to two floors in response to the city's request, yet kept the same height of 40 feet. That seems crazy to me. Is it 20-foot each, um, floors? And frankly, it makes me very suspicious. Please make sure that the height of the development is more in keeping with the two-story buildings that are around it. One more thing about drawings and pictures. I was dismayed to see the pictorial preview of the development in the Tacoma Park newsletter this month. At least the renderings provided by NDC included this disclaimer, "Not to scale." The city left that off entirely, entirely, so our taxpayer dollars were used to put out this rosy scenarios at best and false information at worst. These renderings are so inaccurate that the shadows even depict the sun as shining from the north. Really? Come on, I mean, you know. And while the newsletter mentions the two dates for discussion of the draft resolution and adoption of the resolution, there's no mention that there are any much less serious concerns about the development. I think this skews us in a wrong direction and doesn't make it easier for us to ha, continue having a full conversation about what this is going on. I, um, it comes across as a done deal, which I think it makes it difficult, so please hold NDC to meeting all this council's resolution and have them show us, you, how they're going to do this in real terms, not just estimates or lovely drawings. And please take this to mediation so that all the issues and different desires can be resolved in a way that makes development, we can all be happy with. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kevin Harris. I'm a former resident of Tacoma Park. I now live in, uh, Four Corners in Silver Spring. A member of the Co-op, and I'm currently running as a Democrat to represent Tacoma Park, uh, for District 5 Montgomery County Council seat. My work history includes owning a small business, building a technology company out of an incubator in Baltimore, and serving as a senior planner with the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. The development of Tacoma Junction is a tremendous opportunity for Tacoma Park, both strengthen the local economy and create a cultural hub for the community. Study after study demonstrates that the most proven way of expanding your tax base and creating good-paying jobs is through strengthening local businesses. Over 83% of jobs in Maryland are produced locally, uh, and 60% of these are very small businesses with less than 100 staff. For every $100 spent at a locally-owned business, $43 stays in the local economy versus $13 when spent at a non-local business. If the businesses at the junction are not locally owned, then this valuable public land may simply become a pass-through for local dollars to flow to franchises' corporate headquarters. I know that I'm thinking outside the box here, but that's what Tacoma Park is known for. Imagine for a moment a development that builds off the strengths of existing businesses instead of threatening them. I know that everyone is focused on the configuration of the lay-by, the traffic, and the trash removal. To those ends, I do believe the alternative vision presented by Community Vision for Tacoma Junction presents very viable ways to solve these problems. But just for a moment, I'd like to step outside the box and think slightly differently about how this public land could really be put to a higher use to develop Tacoma Park economically and culturally. Imagine that this development includes a commercial kitchen, where people from all economic and cultural backgrounds have the opportunity to bring their dreams to life. Food production can be a step out of poverty for anyone, regardless of their economic or educational background. No one has to go to a fancy culinary school to create products from their homeland and take them to market. Imagine that in this commercial kitchen, food grown in the agricultural reserve is produced for sale at the Co-op, a restaurant, and at the farmer's market. This is not a dream. Two of the greatest engines of economic development in DC, just a few miles away, are Union Kitchen and Mess Hall. I had the privilege of spending time there while developing my own catering business, and they were hubs of amazing creativity. Hundreds of small businesses have been spawned from these two commercial kitchens. There's nothing stopping us from making that happen in Tacoma Park and Montgomery County. I understand the frustration of many residents who want something to happen now and feel like the process has dragged on, but I urge you to slow this process down, take a step back, and recognize that once this development is built, there are no take-backs.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
My name is Jessica Lindman, I live in Ward 1. I'm, uh, here this evening to talk a little bit more with you about the plans for approaching preparation for decision-making at Tacoma Junction. Thank you for the information this evening that you are going to be postponing the vote until information is in on the traffic study. Mayor Stewart, uh, some weeks ago now, I think about two weeks ago, in response to a letter that I sent you asking about the process, the, the funding, and the sequencing of events at the junction, you indicated that you were close to having the answers to those questions, and I'm hoping still to hear from you about those things. You indicated that the analysis is not complete. Once the analysis from the traffic studies is complete, we need 21 days at minimum to consider that analysis, because that's how long the SAJA has said they need and citizens need at least that long. We need a work session to be scheduled to talk about traffic issues. We need to understand the process for the city arriving at its recommendation for what is the preferable traffic configuration. We also need an understanding of how you intend to sequence the project at the junction with construction of any traffic mitigation measures, because if one is in, before the other, it will have a completely different effect than in the reverse. And so we still do not understand that, nor do we understand the funding mechanism, which you said you would speak to as well. Is it our money? Is it county money? Is it state money? Is it federal money? What are the implications for our, our budget? So a lot of these questions still remain to be answered, and what you said this evening about postponing the vote on the resolution is a helpful piece of information, but it still does not appear to allow adequate time for analysis and for a work session, at least one, for the community to understand the implications of the findings of the traffic study and to hear from you about what you are thinking of recommending as a preferred option. So I would urge you to think again about what the calendar is and to not have us have incremental announcements about potential delays, but instead to lay out the process of all the different steps we need to go through, and then let the vote fall where it will fall, once adequate time is identified for those different steps to occur. So I await the response to my letter, which you indicated would be coming, and I hope will address many of those issues. Thank you very much.
Hi, Rachel Hardwick, um, president of the Co-op Board. We really appreciate the meeting that we had this afternoon with the mayor, several council members, and city staff. We look forward to continuing these conversations. We appreciate the delay on the vote, um, on the site plan until June, and we appreciate that you want to see the Co-op remain at Tacoma Junction. We also appreciate your commitment to get us the data behind the traffic study vote on the site plan. We also appreciate that you will consider, we appreciate and will consider, the city's offer of mediation with NDC, and we will get back to you in short order, so we can continue to work toward ensuring we can get our deliveries, have adequate parking, and space to accommodate our trash and recycling. Thank you very much, and we look forward to continuing the conversation with the city and staff and NDC.
And Ms. Hardwick, since you weren't here before, I just want to say thank you to you and to Mr. Anderson and everyone else who took the time to meet with us today. Thank you.
I'm Susan Schreiber, Ward 1. Back a couple of months ago, I requested from the city clerk and received the emails regarding the NDC plan for Tacoma Junction, sent by residents who took the time to write to the mayor and council during the period 2016 and 2017. In fact, the bulk of them were from July through December, some spilling over into early January of this year. I wanted, having been told by a council member that as many people favored the NDC plan as opposed it, I wanted to see for myself what the balance was and what the issues were that people brought up, uh, when they talked about it. I read through and tallied them, and almost all fell neatly into two categories. One-third wrote to express support for NDC's plan, in some cases, talking a little bit about issues they saw, but really strong support, and two-thirds wrote to communicate their concerns and reservations about what the developer had proposed. Many people asked that the viability of the Co-op be a central priority, noting that the grocery store's basic requirements for unloading deliveries, trash and recycling, and continuity of operations during construction had not been addressed. People were concerned about traffic, how the development would not, would only exacerbate problems for not only cars, but also bicycles, pedestrian, pedestrians at a notoriously challenged intersection. Some asked that the traffic studies be expanded to include streets in the surrounding neighborhoods. Some spoke to the size of the building, too large, and many to the need for meaningful public space for community events. Some called on council members' attention to the city's tradition of support for diversity and inclusion. I want to point out that not one of these emails were anti-development. Everybody wanted something to happen at the junction. They just called on the council to get it right. Months later, the council has taken no steps to ensure that these problems are addressed. I was, I came in a little late, there's a fire next to the Red Line in Brookland, um, and you know that there's no traffic going through, and I had to come from downtown, and so I, I'm very happy to hear that the, that there's a delay in the vote and that that will allow us time for the traffic studies, and I hope, again, that full amount. But I know that we can do better than this. I know that we can. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Mariel. I'm aware that this week, the city council, mayor, and city clerk received a letter from more than, from 70% of the businesses located at the junction. This is an important letter. Why? Because the businesses existing there, some of them for decades, in an area that is revitalizing on its own, have not been consulted by the city in a development that council members and the mayor readily say has gone on for years. How could this happen? Any researcher knows, you understand context, you consult with key leaders before you plan and go forth. I'm concerned, because I see a trend here. These businesses represent the majority-minority in Tacoma Park. They are the face of Tacoma Park, yet this city has chosen to engage a developer, to prepare for voting on a plan that has not been done in consideration of the needs of these businesses. Yet, the goal of this development is what? Commercial revitalization for this very location, for local independent businesses. time understanding the choice the city has made to date to ignore these businesses. Furthermore, I have a hard time because I see another trend, very similar, when the design of the building that is currently before the city does not allow for public space. It is a pay-to-play design. This design does not include allowance for people of all backgrounds and income levels to come and use this public land. If you proceed on this plan, you, city council and mayor, are making a choice. That choice does not represent my values. It does not represent the best of Tacoma Park. You can do better. Please, use your leadership. Use your intelligence. Use your fairness. Be Tacoma Park.
Hello. I'm Alice, M. 7109 Carroll Avenue. I just want to say, I know so many of you all. I've worked on, some I don't. I've worked on committees. I've done things. I'm your friends. This is not working out well. We need to have a meeting, or a mediator, or a group of people, everyone who's involved, and work together. This is just so un-Tacoma Park. People are bad. People are, this isn't right. This isn't good. I mean, I go to parties now with suppers and meals and na, 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 na. I mean, this is not the way it should be, and where's the fire? Let's slow down and figure out what we're doing and meet with the, whatever the key stakeholders or whatever you call them, and let, talk to people. So, when this happens, it's not, you know, Tacoma Park keeps bones of contention for years and years and years and years, so let's not let this be that. Let's work together on this and listen to each other, really listen to what each other has to say. I don't feel, well, I do now. I've talked to Peter, but I hadn't felt very listened to. I felt kind of dismissed. I know I'm just one person, but that's part of what's going on here. Anyway, I could help, I would help, but let's, let's do it as a community. I hope, I hope. We can. We usually do. It'll work. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Mike Royston, 11 Park Avenue. Regarding the Tacoma Junction redevelopment, I do not want to go back to the drawing board. I do not want to slow down this already very excruciatingly slow process, which has been very public, which is great, but I've never personally been involved in going to city council meetings where a project has dragged out this long. The real reason I'm up here is to mention, talk about something that I've heard several other people talk about in past city council meetings. I've heard people state that the new development will bring in businesses that will not be affordable to all residents. To that, I will remind everyone that the Co-op itself is a specialty food store that offers many high-quality, higher-priced items that are not, that not all residents can afford. I look forward to this project moving forward, and any schedule that you can come up with, I look forward to seeing. Thank you.
Calling Cordis, Ward 1. Thank you for extending the time for this process, but I really think that, I think it was Jessica who said it would make more sense to sit down now and figure out all the different steps that remain and schedule that vote way out after all of those things happen, rather than continuing to tell the public, it's going to be in two weeks, it's going to be in two more weeks. I think that'd be really helpful. Also, I also brought my copy of the newsletter with a similar concern as Meghan, and as a former reporter, it's very painful for me and my husband, who's also a former reporter, there are a lot of journalists in Tacoma Park, to have a newspaper that we pay for. This is a very difficult thing to do for a city to put out a newspaper and not make it a propaganda sheet. So, a number of times through the years, I've seen this go on the wrong side of that. I know we have a wonderful editor who I've worked with, and I know that when there are problems, I'm assuming it comes from probably the staff level in this particular case, but yes, it's, if, as a reporter, you know, to try, for the city to try to be objective about this, it certainly, that front-page picture should have said not to scale. There's another picture on the inside that's not to scale. Also, it says that the wooded lot will remain. More accurate would be to say most of the wooded lot would remain. It says it's two-story. A reporter would say, well, it's not really two-story. Most of it's two-story, part of it's three stories. So, those are things that just stand out. I appreciate that the staff did not try to go into great detail because if they had, it would have been essential to really get into the fact that there is a significant proportion of the residents of Tacoma Park who, yes, are dragging this process out because they're unhappy with what's on the table so far. So, I thank you very much for the, for the extension of the time, and I, I encourage everyone to, yes, engage with the local businesses, with the Co-op, with the residents, with the developer, everyone try to work together to really address the many outstanding issues. Thank you.
Hi. Roger Sligle, Alegania Avenue. So, over the past month, I've compiled this thorough assessment of how NDC's responded to the requirements that we set forth for them, and I've shared this with all of you, and it's available on, I know it's been posted to the Community Vision website, but it may be posted in other places as well. So, I've asked you to examine that document and to request that the city staff respond to the individual issues that identifies point by point. I feel that if NDC were vying for a job on a house we lived in, and they handled their proposal as they have with omissions and inaccuracies and gaps, essentially moving farther away from what we requested, we would be nowhere near trusting them to proceed with the job. So, I'm glad for the delay. I think in that situation, we'd be wondering if they were presuming upon our trust and maybe even gaming this proposal to try to clear the maximum profit. I mean, they have to know that our master plan calls for buildings no higher than 30 feet in the junction. They have to know the actual cost of a parking space underground, which the foremost expert on this says is 29,000 square feet in the DC area as of 2016. They have to know there's a more workable off-street solution for the deliveries and the trash that doesn't displace the bus stop and the bike share. And they have to know the true size of that public event space, event space. It's 1,052 square feet, as I measured it with my millimeter stick, and I've written to the city staff and asked them to email all the residents with that correction. It is not 2,700 square feet. It's, we've been made fools of, and I'm really scared that we're going to be made fools of as a city if we don't call them on their bluff. We just can't let unfounded fears rush our decision-making right now when the lack of clarity really cause, calls for us to slow down big time, and I'm glad you've decided to slow down a little bit. I mean, there's this fear tactic that we're hearing, vote yes for this, or you're stuck with the parking lot forever. That's the kind of pressure tactic you hear in sales pitches at timeshare resorts, you know? We don't have to be afraid. We, residents, we've spent thousands of hours, volunteer hours, trying to get this revitalization effort right, and so we are not going to be stuck with a parking lot. So, let's not be motivated by fear. Let's, let's be motivated by love for our community. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Burn Kelly, Ward 3. We have in front of us, as far as the Co-op development, the Junction development, the NDC development, the Purple Line development, the John's Nevin Andrew School development, the Washington McLaughlin School development, the Seventh Day Adventist Hospital development, and we're trying to decide on one thing and lock us in for 100 years. Okay, 99. I didn't, I shouldn't have rounded it up. You're making a decision, and you finally recognized, even though you said we needed time to study traffic after we get the reports, similar to SHA, Madam Mayor, at the SHA meeting you attended. We are not in a hurry. Sam Abbott was not in a hurry, but he was determined. The majority, the majority, as was just pointed out by the statistics given to you by Susan Schreiber, the majority of the people who want development for the Co-op site, the Junction site, want what you have stated in your agreement with NDC to develop the site, and that's reasonable accommodations for the Co-op, public space. And we have the talent and ability, we have architects, builders, landscape architects in this city who we didn't call on. We did not have charrettes over the design, like I have been involved with in so many other designs in College Park, in Greenbelt, in other great towns. But we did not do that, and we did not require that from NDC. We are not in a hurry. What we are in need of is a broad spectrum outlook of how many parking spaces actually exist in the city. Could we get developers to put a jitney bus system in? Are we going to always be bound to the car? Do we need a big parking lot beneath the ground to take up a fill space? Is that a good carbon footprint? Are we really green? Are we platinum? Are we better than that? Are we requiring solar panels? Today, on the news, they're going to require solar panels. So, there are many things that you guys seem to not be caring for or deliberate about, but somehow accommodating NDC's crazy pictures. I know how to build a 40-foot building, and I know how to put a mezzanine or lofts in there, or squash courts, or anything that requires a second floor of 20 feet. That's BS. That's a, that's a, possibly a four-story building, but because they're going to honor the first floor of real estate, uh, real, sorry, retail standards, it's going to be two floors and the opportunity to build inside of it. I want you to be more considerate as you go forward. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Salwa Kamara, and I live close to the Co-op. I think the Co-op is very important to me and my daughter because when we didn't really have a car, we would walk to the Co-op, and I think that's, that was very important. I also think the Co-op is very diverse. It brings all, you know, people from all walks of life, whether you're rich, you're poor, you're black, or you're white. Everybody wants to go to the Co-op. And I think it's just, if you think of Tacoma Park, someone's always asking, oh, have you been to the Co-op? Or what is it like? Can you get me this from the Co-op? And I think that's very important. I think this new development will basically eradicate the Co-op because the parking already, in, driving is already hard. I used to take the bus, and literally, the bus would get on the sidewalk. That's how narrow the road is. So, I'm not really sure how this is going to go, but I just wish and hope that the Co-op would stay and, you know, and just keep Tacoma Park the way it is, and that's it. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name's Nadine Block, and I'm, I want to bring, there's been so many great things said tonight. I'm not going to repeat them. I'm in favor of a development that is more appropriate-sized, as most of you know. I'm looking, I want to look a little bigger picture at what's happening on either end of Tacoma Park. We have massive infill happening at the metro, which makes a lot of sense. I've been told that when the CVS lease is up, there's going to be a huge development put in there with housing and retail, another several hundred units going in there. We know that there's also another several hundred units slated for what is currently green space at the metro in DC. So, we have massive development happening in that end of town. We also have really exciting stuff happening in Mississauga's Ward, Ward 6. We have Purple Line going in. We have rapid bus transit that's just been approved, and we have zoning for appropriate development there that people say they want. In fact, I spent last Sunday talking to people in Ward 6 who were, by and large, I'd say 99 to 1, supporters of the Co-op, happy to shop at the Junction, take yoga classes, go to the animal doctors, et cetera, and they were very, very concerned and felt very uninformed about the threats to that junction. And when we think about the development that could happen because of the Purple Line and other things on New Hampshire Avenue, and the development happening on the other end of town, what we have is a mile in between from either end, a development that is already constrained by traffic patterns and difficult negotiations in that space. State Highway owns the roads. We have historic district issues, and so we have an issue about if we put a big development there that actually charges a lot of money for parking, has very high retail stores, it's very unlikely that we're going to be able to sustain that long-term. And I could see moving out 10, 15, 20 years, just about when this development should actually pay back, I could see a bankruptcy happening because people are not going to actually go into Tacoma Park because it's much more easier access to things on the two other nodes of Tacoma Park. So, it makes more sense to develop the junction for walkers and for people who can support local businesses at that kind of scale. And so, I hope that we take a look at the big picture, we get more information about the development that's happening in either end, and we really support smart development in Ward 6 where people are really interested in it, and we have the infrastructure that will make it much more accessible and much more appropriate. Thank you.
Hi, council members. I'm Kelly Gibson. I live on Triscott Avenue, a member, a resident in Ward 2. Me and my husband have lived in Tacoma Park 10 years. I've been in front of the council a couple times about the junction issue. I'd first like to say that this junction issue has really connected me to a lot of my neighbors. We've spent the last two weeks, every Sunday, talking about how we can be heard and represented. We're not as represented at these meetings. In fact, I had to have a neighbor come over and sit with my kids because they're not asleep yet because my husband had to work late, and the idea of coming here and getting a sitter to come here feels hard, but we're, there's a lot of voice in the other direction here because their logistics are different than our logistics. So, I'm speaking on behalf of a crew of Ward 2 residents. We are excited about this site plan, like flat out. We are really appreciative of the time you all have spent over many, many years talking about this, and the process that you've brought to it, and the patience, and the comprehensive listening to your community. We're very grateful for that. We're excited about a few things that speak to even what the woman before me said, walkability. Those two sides of this city, I live right in the middle. We don't walk to downtown. We drive to downtown. We pay to park downtown. We frequent those establishments downtown. It would be great if we could walk to one of those, right, in our community. I'll speak for neighbors who have kids that are starting to walk to Spring Mill and Soul Food. We, we will continue to frequent all the small businesses in the junction. We understand that the traffic is an issue. We appreciate you working with State Highway. We know you'll continue to do that. We know you're not overlooking that issue. We understand that there are obstacles, but what we want to say is that this, if we don't move forward with this site plan, we're very, very nervous that we go back to a parking lot for five more years. And five more years means kids go to college. Five more years means we don't walk to have drinks at the junction. We don't get to shop at the Co-op, grab lunch for tomorrow, stop and have dinner, meet new neighbors. We don't get to do that. That makes us really nervous. So, we say we are all in on this site plan. I represent, you know, 35 Ward 2 residents, and we would all love to be here, but thank you for your time. We really look forward to resolution. We cannot wait until you take a vote on this, and we want you to know that our spirit is as loud as everybody's voices, and we are doing our best to get here to let you know that. So, thanks very much.
Hi, everyone. I'm Micah Bevington. I live around the corner from Kelly. I'm one of the many people who also supports this. I just want to echo what she said, and really, we are just I just want to echo what she said, and really, we are just on the edge of Tacoma. It's not easy, actually, especially nowadays, kind of getting all the way into the center of town without driving. My kids are now actually starting to walk. I like the idea of a developed Junction. I like that it means that maybe there are more places my young teen can work in a few years. I like the idea that I will have more than one reason to go there. I have been a member of the co-op for 10 years. I support the co-op. I think I'd support it more as a shopper if there was more around it, frankly. Right now, it takes a lot for me to turn right into that parking lot when I'm trying to get home. Sometimes it's easier just to head on over to Langley. I would much rather frequent the businesses in Tacoma. I think a developed Junction is going to actually make it easier for me to do that, and for my children to do that, and for my neighbors to do that. What Kelly said, I mean, she's not kidding. We've had houses full of people who are really excited about this development. You know, I've lived here for a decade, and I love the idea of having more diverse shops there, actually, too, because I think it will make us a richer community. And frankly, we're a strong community. If we don't like the shops that are there, I'm pretty sure people aren't going to frequent them, and they'll be out pretty soon. But let's look at Old Town, where there are shops that are getting slowly pushed out. I know rents are an issue, but, you know, we can keep a business going if it's good. And I think if the co-op has a few more friendly neighbors there, they might do better in the long-term. So I don't know if I presented it all well. It's been a long day, but Kelly's right. There are a lot of us who support this. So Cindy, I hope we can, you know, have your support when the time comes, but you've definitely got ours for a developed Junction. Thanks.
Kelly Skelton, Ward 6. One of my neighbors referenced her, a study that was of the number of emails that you'd received regards pro or con of the current site plan, and a third were pro and two-thirds were con. The fact that a third of the people wrote in to say, "I really like this," is kind of shocking, because normally, people come out to tell you what they don't like to see and what they're not happy with. And, you know, there's a lot of new members on the council, so you probably weren't here at the instigation of this, and that's probably great, because you're looking at it with fresh eyes. And at least in my community, we voted strongly for Taliya. You were like the first, it was like, you know, lots of counts of, "We just all voted for you," because we thought that you would give things like this and the Purple Line the attention that it needed. And I think that you will. And I trust that the other members have the same confidence of their neighborhood. So you need to listen to your neighborhood. But at least in Ward 6, just like in Ward 2, we're very much at the very edge. We do drive to downtown Tacoma Park, unfortunately. We pay to, but we pay to park, so, you know, there you go. We pay to park, we pay to have dinner, and it would be nice to have something closer so that we could take a walk. We could go over the nice, and we won't talk about how much the bridge costs, we will go over the nice bridge, and well-lit, you know, pedestrian-friendly bridge, and come over and have dinner. But the extra mile to downtown really is an issue for a lot of us, and we would like to see a developed Junction. And frankly, we have a lot of community space. And when we don't have community space, we find it, like with the porch concerts that we do, and with using the band shell, and with developing the tot lot, so that when you're at the band shell, you have the tot lot. I think we've done a good job of community space, frankly. I'd like to see some revenue for the other issue that I talked about, which is, you know, and my other very unappealing position, that you should maintain or raise our taxes so that we can fund the city and fund all the good things that we want to do. Maintain or raise, but that's just my opinion. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comments this evening? Okay, thank you very much, everyone, for your public comments tonight. Now, moving on, we will have council comments. Any council comments this evening? Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick things. First of all, I want to thank the members of Ward 3 who came out to my listening sessions over the past week or so. It was a great opportunity to hear from people and talk with people in a more dialogue opportunity, and I hope we can continue to have those in the future. I think it would be something that would be useful to build on long-term, so that we continue to have those kind of community-building opportunities. I also want to note, a couple of people referenced in their public comments today a desire for people to talk with the businesses in the Junction area. And I want to thank the businesses for sharing the letter that they did with us. I actually have spoken with some of the owners of the businesses in the Junction previously, and was actually, prior to that letter, working to contact some more and try to talk more with them. But that's something that I definitely want to prioritize, and I think, you know, it's important to talk with everyone and hear everyone in the community. So I hope that they understand that that's something that we value as well. And then finally, I just want to note, things have been busy, so we haven't really finalized the plans, but we have tentatively on the calendar for June 9th, it's a Saturday, a coffee in the park. I guess there probably won't be any coffee, but it would be a coffee with the council member in the park as an alternative to sort of the traditional thing that we do on a Friday morning at 8:00 AM. Rather than doing that, we're going to have a Ward 3 coffee in a park on a Saturday, so that people can come out and enjoy the nice weather, hopefully, and be in a different venue. So I will be in touch soon with some more details on that, but if anyone is interested, I hope you can mark it on your calendar now. Thanks.
Councilmember Kovar. Thank you. Two things. One, I know that some of my colleagues and probably many of the people here in the audience were fortunate to be able to attend the Historic Tacoma's House and Garden Tour this past weekend. I went around to most of the houses. I didn't quite get to all of them, but it was the usual really great expression of the wide range of architectural styles and the creativity of the people, and yet, a lot of the local architects were involved also. So I just want to thank everybody at Historic Tacoma for doing that. Secondly, and I'll be sending more information out about this to Ward 1 residents, but we did have a meeting last night, kind of sparsely attended, where Pepco presented on the work that they're doing in North Tacoma. And those who've driven recently to Silver Spring during construction working hours of roughly 9:00 to 3:30 have noticed that it can be a challenge at times. That project's going to be continuing on for over a number of months, let's put it that way, and affecting us at least, our area, at least through the end of the year. There will be additional detouring, but again, it will take place during the construction hours, which I think is helpful on the part of Pepco. And so I will be sending more information out, and I think we'll probably post it on the, I think they're slightly massaging the PowerPoint that was presented, so that it's more easily understood. But they'll actually have on there roughly, week by week, as to when work will be done in different locations for those who live on Tacoma Avenue or frequent Fenton Street as a way of getting to Silver Spring. So keep your eye out for that. Thank you. Councilwoman Searcy.
Good evening, everyone. So, quick update regarding Hillwood Manor Park. Last week, there was quite a bit of work that was happening there. The Montgomery County National Parks and Planning Commission was doing some maintenance work, and that actually included filling the sinkhole. They were scheduled to repair the ladder and a few other things. Fortunately, I was engaging with staff while the team was out, which worked out pretty well, because it was just pick up the phone and call someone. Also, last week, have been in contact with staff from Tom Huckler's office about the park as well. So fingers crossed, we will continue to make progress in making the improvements there. Also, just a quick reminder for folks, the Crossroads Farmers Market has started. It is on Wednesdays at Ann Street. It's like, if you telework, it's a great place to go get lunch. The food is amazing. It's just such a wonderful experience. So definitely encourage people to go out on Wednesdays on Ann Street between University Boulevard and Hammond from 11:00 until 1:00. And lastly, I'm just going through my notes. So in my update to residents of Ward 6, I put together a quick little four-question survey for residents about the Junction. And I just want to encourage residents to please, 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 let me know what you think. I know how hard it can be when you work in DC, you don't get off to 6:30, and by the time you deal with Metro, the last place you want to be is here. So please, take a few minutes, it's two minutes, to just tell me what you think about the Junction development and what some of the concerns that you might have are. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Terrific. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank everyone again for coming tonight and voicing your opinion, both about the taxes and also about the development of Tacoma Junction, and also to the people that have met with me over the past few weeks. Again, I appreciate hearing from all of you, and, you know, I sense a feeling from a number of comments that are made that we're not listening to you. I can assure you that I am listening to you, but I also assure you that, from what I hear from my colleagues, you know, voices are heard. It's a difficult process, both the taxes and the Junction development are both, they're not slam dunks. You don't just wake up and say, "This is the," you know, it's A, not B. You know, it's a lot of moving parts. And so anyways, I appreciate your taking the time and working with us on this. Thank you.
And I'll just follow up and thank everyone as well, and just send my apologies. I'm way behind on emails. As many people know, I've had some family issues that I've had to address over the last couple of weeks, and I apologize. I'm just behind. And I hope to make it up this weekend, but I also, it's Mother's Day, and I also helped to spend time with my family this weekend, because I need to do that. So I just ask everyone for a little bit more time. Phone calls, meetings, sometimes are easier. So I am here in the city a great deal, always welcome, love to grab coffee or something else, but I just, if I could just get a little bit more time on emails, that would be awesome. Thank you. All right, let's move on now to City Manager comments.
Thank you. Have fairly short ones this week, but as always, City Manager comments are posted on the website, both on the Agenda page and on the City Manager page. This week, I have information on the proposed land exchange related to John Nevin's Andrews property. So when the daycare center, Central Neo, was looking at purchasing the property, they, of course, had a surveyor to prepare the, you know, do the checks that you do before you purchase property, and it was clear that there was, it was discovered that there was a land, that there was a discrepancy between the land records with the deed versus the tax maps and the way that we've always thought of the property, of the school property versus the Spring Park property. So in my City Manager comments, I actually have a map that shows the areas that the city's been using, that's really the property of the Potomac Conference and the Seventh Day Adventist Church, and property that the school had been using this part of Spring Park. So coming before you will be a proposal to do a land swap to make the land records actually look like the way we've used them for years. And the land swap is of approximately equal size, so it's really quite straightforward. There doesn't seem to be any legal issue related to this. We will do a work session, and then it's a two-reading ordinance, because it's a land process. But I know that people had interest in this, you know, what was going on, and I just want to let people know that we've looked at it carefully in order to protect the use of our park, as well as to clean up the land records. It makes sense to do this switch. I'm happy to answer any questions that people have about that. I also want to note that the outdoor café permit regulations, the time of reviewing them is over. I have reviewed them and accepted them. There's an option that the council can accept the regulations, modify, withdraw, or take no action. If you decide to take no action on the existing regulations, then we will publish a notice about that in the newsletter, and 10 days after the publication, the regulation becomes effective. I have emailed to the council those regulations as modified. The only modification that we made based on citizen comment was to clarify that within areas where you could be seated, there's no smoking or vaping allowed. That actually is the case in any event, but we wanted to make it clear in the regulations that that applies. There was also some helpful comments, just as we would be reviewing a site plan, what to think, what to look at. The one comment had to do with, in some places, when you get out of the car, if you're bumping, as you open the car door, if you're bumping into tables or something, that's a problem. That really is part of us, is our reviewing of individual application. We will look at the design for that and ensure that there's safe access, and that would be one of the things we would look at. So I think it's something that the council then can, you can determine if you want to take it up, but if you decide not to take it up, it'll move forward.
One question about that. This isn't something I think should be taken up, just something I'd like to ask you about. So I just noticed when I was parking the other day on Laurel Avenue by one of the establishments that has outside tables already, and you can imagine the table could be set up so that people sit parallel to the road, or you could have one person sitting with their back to the road and one with their back to the sidewalk. In this case, it was with the back to the road and the back to the sidewalk. So really, the person was basically right on the curb as I pulled in. And I don't know whether that's something that, it didn't look like it would matter to the establishment, because there's going to be two people at that table in any case, but I could easily imagine if somebody pulled in or was doing a parallel park, they could hit that person with almost no effort. So that would be one thing to think about.
So on Laurel Avenue, those aren't actually permitted spaces. I mean, they kind of are under an informal process, but under this, it would be more regularized, and we would look at how that was laid out.
And it might just be that they should only do the parallel ones or whatever.
That may be a good idea.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any other question on that?
I just have a quick, could you just give a brief overview of what's happening with the retiming of the lights in the Junction? I know a lot of people are interested in that.
Talk about something that takes a lot of staff time, and we're not responsible. The, so the county has been taking over the signalization at the Junction, several lights and the pedestrian signals. And in doing that, apparently, it's much harder than it would seem to do to get the timing even back to the way it was, but to try to make it so that it works well. And each time you tweak something, it has a different kind of ramification, and they're monitoring that. So there was a time when some parts worked really well, but others didn't, and they tweaked them. Now we get reports of long queues on Ethan Allen and Carroll Avenue, and there still is some concern about areas where, especially near the fire station, pedestrians used to not have cars turning while they're walking across the street, and now they are allowed to, cars are allowed to turn. But because they've not done that in the past, people have a pattern, and so they're experimenting with different timings of that. We have signs up to try to warn people to please watch out, be careful as you go through there. Even in the same day, things could be different, because they're experimenting with it. I am not sure how much longer this is going to go on. I had heard at some point that it would have been over last week, and then by today. My guess is it's probably another week where they're trying to adjust them. I do appreciate when people have particular information that they can share when it was a problem. It's not that useful to say, "Oh, the lights are terrible." It's great to say, "Gee, at 7:15, it took 10 minutes on Carroll," or, you know, "In this segment, going this direction," something like that, so that we are able to convey that information to the county folks who are tweaking them, and they can look specifically at that. So I encourage people to continue to write in. They can write to me. We'll pass it along to the county folks that are doing those adjustments. It's the best I can say. It's, you know, it's actually, the thing I think that was particularly frustrating, and I did convey this actually to the State Highway Administrator, was that it wasn't conveyed to us what all's involved in the switchover, and there was no signage out to say, "This is what's going to happen, please be aware." And so finally, you know, 10 days after it started, we have signs out there. So that was the thing that was most frustrating about it, I think, is that was most frustrating about it, I think, is that there wasn't the heads-up given that there were these changes that were going to happen. I'm hoping that it will get better.
Okay. Any other updates?
Yeah, I just want to give a kudo to Lucy Naher for her work with the TKPK 5K, and then today, again, with the Bike to School Day. Yes. We all, she's wonderful, and it was a great success, and the weather couldn't be better, so that was really nice.
I know. I was really upset I had to miss the 5K on Sunday.
You missed it!
Yeah, I was still coming back from Florida, so.
That's right. Oh. Yeah, no, it was, it was very popular.
Yeah. So, I know, I had to get my T-shirt because I have the whole.
Oh, that's right.
No, I want, even though I get to run.
I'll let Lucy know that you're missing one.
I'm missing a set, one of my set. Great. All right. Let's move on now to our voting session. The three items we have to vote on tonight, the first is the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 tax rate. And the City Manager wanted to speak to us?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words first. The process of preparing the budget is a difficult one, and I'm very fortunate to have a wonderful Finance Director, Susan Chung, as well as excellent department heads and other staff who make the process go as smoothly as possible. And they really worked hard. I really appreciate it. As I've mentioned before, it was more difficult than in past years to come up with a proposed budget that met the council's goals, as said in the retreats last January. This year, I also took into consideration work that is before the city, whether we like it or not, such as the Purple Line and the moving of the hospital, the reduced revenue we had this year due to the FY 18 tax rate that was cut below the constant yield level, the uncertainty of the economy and the impact of the federal tax law changes, concern for the residents and their ability to pay increased taxes, and the need to protect the city's reserves at at least a minimum level. I know that you, the council, also struggled with your decisions on the proposed budget, and I deeply appreciate the care and thought that you gave to both individual components and to the overall budget while weighing the comments and expectations of your constituents. One of the council's goals is financially sustainable city government with a special emphasis on reserves. And I'd like to touch on that subject briefly this evening. First, there is a resolution on the work session discussion this evening that concerns the general fund, unassigned fund balance. It's what we usually think of as our reserves. It would set the minimum for this fund balance at 17% of the general fund revenues for the year when adopting a budget. If there is a special circumstance where it is not possible to meet that 17% level, the council would need to identify that situation in the budget ordinance. There is a provision in the budget ordinance before you tonight that addresses the small level of unassigned fund balance this year. Second, we had a discussion about the equipment replacement reserve and whether a $700,000 contribution was appropriate, or should it be the $780,000 that was called for through the ERR spreadsheet. There are a number of reasons why this formula is imprecise, but it may make sense to set a policy regarding this reserve fund as well. I'm glad the council is as committed as I am to adequately funding the special reserve fund. Staff work is also being done on clarifying the facility maintenance reserve and what it should include, and we'll be bringing some of that information before you in the future. And finally, the additional $100,000 contribution that I proposed for the police pension fund is being cut to $50,000 for FY 19. This is above the actuarially recommended amount, so I'm not overly concerned with the reduction, although I would prefer the larger amount, given the percent of the pension that is unfunded. As you look through your packet on the budget ordinances, you may have noticed that there was a reduction made in the Speed Camera Fund. This is because the funds for the police pension are tagged to each officer, not as a bulk. So, the amounts associated with the two officers paid from the Speed Camera program were reduced, as well as the amounts for officers in the police department budget. One of the biggest asks I had of the council for the FY 19 budget was five new positions. That is a huge ask. I appreciate that three of the positions were approved. As we move forward through the year, I will be alerting you to the work that the staff is not able to handle, and will ask you to help in prioritizing the work programs when needed. I will also be very firm in insisting that managers and other supervisors attend to the administrative work they need to do that is separate from project work. For example, attention to employee evaluations will take precedence over discretionary work. Around next Valentine's Day, the city will receive the information for next year's constant yield number based on the triennial property assessments that will be done in December of this year. We will have a lot to consider next year. As I have mentioned before, I'm honored to serve with an attentive and thoughtful city council, and with simply wonderful professional staff. And I kind of look forward to next year's budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, the items are before you, and I think we'll just kind of take them in order, and if you've got questions, that's fine.
Terrific. Would someone like to move the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 tax rate?
So, move.
Oh, I got, Councilmember Smith, move. Councilmember Siemens, second. Would anyone like to speak to the tax rate or ordinance, or have any questions on that? Councilwoman Circe?
So, I just want to reiterate, behind the scenes, I felt that there was a way for us to still lower the tax rate, but make some additional contributions to the reserves. I think it is critically important that we, as a council, not just think of the needs for today, but also focus on the city's viability in the future. And there's a lot of unknowns this year, which makes it particularly hard to anticipate what tomorrow may bring. But I definitely think that it's important for us, even if we're not able to do it this time around, to really set a goal as a council for ensuring the appropriate level of reserves that we need in order to ensure the fiscal viability of the city. Again, there's plenty of unknowns, and I don't want to be very Chicken Little. But given the large-scale projects that are happening, it's important for us to make sure that there are enough dollars that are, that we have available to us if we should need them. Thanks.
Councilmember DeBala.
Yeah. I agree. I had a question about the personal property in the railroad and public utilities in terms of how those, what kind of control we have over those numbers.
Actually, you could set them. We just didn't have a discussion about them. This is the tax rate that we've had for some time. I think with the personal property tax, you know, we were looking at taking out the inventory tax portion as of FY 20, and so, it didn't occur to me to, like, bring up, did you want to adjust the actual rate? And on the railroad and utilities, we don't really have a kind of system for what we want to do, and that may be a really good discussion for an upcoming year.
Okay. And the public utilities is a pretty small portion of the revenue.
That's right. It's not very much, it's not very much money.
Whereas the personal property is a little bit more.
Right.
Okay. Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you. I just wanted to, first of all, thank the City Manager and the staff for all of the work on the budget, and answering our questions, and my many questions as a new council member going through this process. I echo Councilmember Circe's comments about the reserves, and I'm glad that we're having the conversation about that. Looking forward to next year, I think it would be really helpful if we can have thorough information about the reserve levels during our reconciliation process. I know we were kind of looking at that spreadsheet during the process, and it seemed like some of the calculations with the spreadsheet weren't necessarily accurate when we were adjusting things. So, I think it would be helpful.
We're going to change that.
Yeah. I think it would be helpful to have, have an opportunity to really see that, and have that be part of the conversation.
Right.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And on the tax rate, I'll just note that, one, I want to thank the city staff for answering all the questions, putting together the budget this year. And for me, when I think of the tax rate, I think of stability. I think of, for us as a council, to be able to plan and to make sure that residents can plan. So, Kelly, as she mentioned before, I always liked the idea of starting at where we are, and possibly adjusting for inflation. Last year, I voted against our tax rate because I felt we had gone too far below, and I knew this year we were going to have to make some really tough decisions. And so, I will be voting this year for the tax rate, but I also do think that as we are moving forward, I'd like to think about how we may be able to do, like, multi-year budgets, and really be thinking about, you know, this kind of stability across the board. And when I look at the chart for our tax rate, I actually don't like the fact that it goes up and down on that bar chart. I would like to see something much more smoothed out, and for us to be planning that. And I completely, 100%, agree on the reserves, as my colleagues know. So, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. Yeah. I just want to reiterate something that I mentioned when we voted last week, that in addition to the kind of discussions that we'll be having today, and voting next week, I suppose, on the reserves, that we also, and what the mayor mentioned, that we look a little bit more closely at how we funnel our council priorities into the budget, because, you know, you're only human when you mention something as a priority, and we get the support from the staff, and it ends up in the budget. But I think there ought to be a clearer understanding of the trade-offs for what are the costs, whether it's just additional staff time, because any staff time is time that can't be spent on something else, as you were just referring to. So, I think as the budget is assembled, I think it'll be helpful for us to understand of the various things that we've designated as priorities within the priorities document, which I think that whole process in the document is really helpful to us, just to understand, okay, you've asked for these things, what is their cost? Do they have a benefit that can be calculated from them? And then we, that can help us, I think, assess which things should be priorities for that given year, which other things should maybe be, remain on the list, but be put off until later. So, I just think having that kind of discussion for how to develop the alternatives, I think, is something that would be helpful, too. And we've talked about it, but I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
I just want to thank the staff for putting together the budget. I want to thank my colleagues for holding the line on the tax rate. I think it's really important that we don't increase taxes. There was a recent report in Market Watch that says, out of the 50 states, Maryland is the only state that will have deteriorating economic activity in the next six months. So, there is something going on in the economy that is not positive. So, I think this is the time that we have to be very careful in increasing the taxes on our residents. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I would like to thank everyone for bringing this together, and it's been a pleasure working with this council and putting the budget together also, and making all those difficult decisions that come up at this time. I look forward to discussion on reserves. I think that's an important thing, that I've disappointed at where we are right now. But I think as we move forward, I'm glad we're going to be talking about that. And, well, that's all for now. Thank you.
Terrific. All right. All those in favor of adopting the FY 2019 tax rate, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Next item is the first reading ordinance adopting.
Mayor, let me just, for the record, say what the rate is.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Yes.
It's going, it will be set at 52.91 cents per $100 assessed valuation. So, it's good to, like, actually say it out loud. I realize I hadn't done that.
And this year, we got two decimal points, so we don't drive you a little.
Well, yeah.
Some years we do.
That extra one. I was like, I was trying to say, think, could I, like, if I round down, and then I was like, no, I still need that money. So, I didn't.
All right. Next is the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 Stormwater Management Budget. Do you have someone move that?
I think you have to call yourself as the Stormwater Board, right?
Oh, okay. It was on the, that's right. So.
I don't think we didn't, we didn't put that, highlight that, but I think.
Right. You're right, actually, right. So, would someone like to move for us to convene as the Stormwater Management Board?
Sure.
Councilwoman DeBala, do I have a second? Councilwoman Circe, any conversation about that? All right. All those in favor of voting to be the Stormwater Management Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. We are now the Stormwater Management Board. Now, would someone like to move the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 Stormwater Management Budget?
I'm moving.
Councilwoman Kostic, movement. Councilwoman Siemens, second. Any questions, or Councilmember Siemens?
No, that's fine.
Oh, that's fine. Well, I got some lights on here. Councilwoman DeBala?
So, I was, I was going to save all my thank yous on the, on the budget for the third ordinance, which is actually the budget. But the staff's been wonderful, and I've really enjoyed working with all of you. And I'm very pleased that we were able to get where we were at. Looking forward to even more improvement in the process next year. I did have one very specific question on the Stormwater Management Fund, because it, there's a section for, there's $15,956 fund. With that big a budget, we needed to, so what is that?
So, basically, all of our budgets have to be equal. And so, in order for the budget to be, the amount of activity that we intend on spending on stormwater projects is $15,956 less than how much we would get in stormwater revenue this year. But there is a fund balance in the Stormwater Fund. So, we're using that $15,000 from the Stormwater Fund to make it balanced.
So, you're telling me it's bookkeeping?
It's a bookkeeping item.
Thank you. Councilwoman Circe?
So, I know I've been going back and forth with you and Daryl about, there's a large number of stormwater projects that are happening in Ward 6. And one of them is, relates to the Hillwood Manor Park. So, what would be, but that one is an out year, like FY 23. Would it be possible, not for this, not for this year, because I don't want to muck around with that, but for FY 20? Like, so, it seems as if the, some of the lying items is kind of at a constant of like $250,000. And I wasn't sure if that's, because that's how much we have to actually put, or, you know, is there flexibility in terms of the amount, and whether or not we can bump priority projects up in terms of timing?
There's actually quite a lot of flexibility. There are some things that we know the time is coming, and we have to do them. But it's a great conversation to have as we, as we look in that CIP, you know, within the out years. And so, if there's some things, we often move things around as we get close to budget time. And so, I think, you know, you've put that little click in there. We'll keep looking at it. And, you know, sometimes you can't do everything just by the nature of either the money or the capacity. But there's usually some flexibility, and I'm happy to have that conversation with the council about how to look in some of the out years for the stormwater budget. It seems like a great discussion for the council.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Yes. Thank you. Can you just say a few words, would you mind, the City Manager, about the survey that we were going to do to analyze the?
You know, I don't know the status of it. I know stuff was underway. I think, I don't think this break is here at the moment, but I'll get something back to the council.
If we can get back on that.
Absolutely. I'm looking forward to it.
So, that's just a survey to look at whether there is another way of calculating what various property owners would pay based on the size of their impermeable surface and so on.
That's right. So, one of it is it gets an up-to-date identification of how much surface area is impermeable, and then, you know, by property. And then, that can give some pretty good information potentially on some different ways of calculating it, which, you know, we do want to find ways that benefit those who are doing more to help the stormwater system.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. All those in favor of the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 Stormwater Management Budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Next, first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 budget. Who would like to move that?
Councilman.
Councilman Smith, and Councilwoman Circe, second. Any questions or comments on this? Councilwoman DeBala?
Yeah. The, I have a couple of questions, and I know that some of them I asked before, and maybe I'm just being a little dense here. But my first question is a new one. On the first page, one, two, three, six, "Whereas," is that intended to apply to every year, or is that intended to apply to this year, in which case, let's put fiscal 19 in there?
So, what I did was I went, I took the liberty of adding to a standard budget ordinance So what I did was I went, I took the liberty of adding to a standard budget ordinance, as what I mentioned before, of referencing the resolution that would be discussed by you at work session and potentially voted on by you next week, that identifies where we stand on putting 17% of the, an equivalent amount of 17% of the general fund revenue as the target for the unassigned fund balance for the general fund.
So merging the two resolutions.
So what the resolution calls for is on those years when we can't do the 17%, to specify that fact in the budget ordinance and kind of the reason why it's still, why we still are protected. Or if we're not, be very upfront about that. And so even though you don't vote on the resolution till next week, this is a two-reading ordinance, so I wanted to have it as part of this tonight, for you to consider.
So it looks premature, but after another hour or so, it won't be?
Fifteen minutes.
After next Wednesday, it won't be.
All right, so let's keep track of that.
But that's why it's in here as at first reading, so that you can consider it and see how it relates to the resolution later.
Okay, the other, two other questions. One is on the blue sheets, just for those who are at home reading aloud, reading along. On the first page, it says this, that the budget is 38 million and the revenues are 32 million, and that leaves a lot missing. But it's not really missing. It's explained a little further when you talk about the fund balance and how that works out.
That's right.
So my first question is, how does taking, remind me, how does taking 6 million out of the fund balance compared to what we typically do? Because typically, you, typically some comes out every year, right?
That's right.
But maybe not quite that much?
Yeah, this, last year, it was also fairly large, but then we didn't spend some because of the library. So part of this has to do with just the, you know, some of the timing on when we use certain funds.
Okay.
It's a large amount this year. I mean, that's part of the comments that we've been making, is that this is unusual year.
Right. And, right, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. And then, when I put it all together, there are a couple of different places where there are intergovernmental revenues, and one is in the general fund, and that's the county reimbursements, the so-called tax duplication. But then there's a whole section called special revenue, and a lot of that is intergovernmental, and that is essentially grants.
That's right. Yes. So when we refer to interjurisdictional funds, we don't use this, we don't count the special revenues in that. We count that separately. But if you look just at the interjurisdictional funds, the, that go into the general fund, it's 28% of our revenue. It's a big portion of our revenue. It's much more than we get by income tax. And so, so that's part of the reason we pay a lot of attention to it. This year, the special revenue budget, which is grants, is 5 million bucks.
Anticipating the next question.
And so that's a large amount. We appreciate that grant money. They go to the major projects, the road projects primarily.
Yeah. Next year, it'd be nice to see the matching dollars that go with each of those special revenues. If it was in here, I lost it.
We did present that when we presented, when I went through the various work sessions on the capital projects. The, so for example, with Flower Avenue, the amount that we matched is much smaller than the amount that we got. So it's like a five to one number.
Right, but it's not zero, so I, yeah, okay.
And sometimes it is zero. Sometimes we don't have to have any match whatsoever.
Yeah. Okay, so that, yeah, so the special revenue funds were way up this year, but you just addressed that. Thank you.
Sure. Councilwoman Cierci?
So I just want to take this opportunity to thank the city staff for the budget. I don't know if you all are planning a party once this thing is done.
Sleep.
Sleep.
There's no money for a party.
There's no money for the party. Oh, man.
No.
I'm so sorry.
We need a special reserve fund.
I was going to say, bring a bottle of champagne, but then I thought about it. Working for the government, you can't even open it in a building.
No, no, I don't do that.
So thank you all so much for all of your hard work and being available to answer questions. So it's been just a crazy ride, but one that I'm willing to do again. So thumbs up.
And we're glad to hear that.
Yeah, you know.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, thank you. Could we just go back for a moment to the questions that my friend on the right, Councilmember DeBala, asked about, I'm sorry. So in the whereas clause, and it's the last two, I guess it's the sixth and seventh one.
That's right.
So the policy, and you already answered this, but it's just not 100% clear to me. The policy that's being proposed is that the unassigned fund reserve would be 17%.
Of the general fund revenues.
But that's not for this budget, right?
It does, certainly doesn't meet this, we do not, in no way we meet that this year.
We know that it doesn't, right?
Right.
So...
But that is a best practice, and we'll talk about that during the work session, but I, I think that it, I think it's a very appropriate amount based on the best practice recommendations of a variety of sources.
So if we're going to be discussing that concept tonight, or that set of issues tonight, and then voting next week perhaps, so what happens if we vote to support a different percentage, or find a different function to calculate?
So in the discussion of the resolution, which is a work session discussion tonight, then a vote next week, if you want to have these numbers changed, in second reading of this ordinance, we can make that adjustment and change that.
Okay. And then can you talk about, in the where is clause, immediately after that, and again, I know you just talked about this in response to Councilmember DeBala's question, but how does the restricted bond reserve provide additional protection, if I can put it that way?
Right. So the, we have traditionally, like for the last 10 years or so, wanted to have at least $3 million in our unassigned fund balance for the normal ups and downs of paying bills that we have, the standard operating expenses. We have 2.6 million in it this, for FY '19. The bond reserve is dedicated funds for the, to be spent on road projects and library. The amount that would be spent from that won't be spent all at once. It'll be spent over the course of the year. It may not all get spent, depending, especially on how the library timing is. So the funds that are sitting in the bank, to me, give that little bit of fluff if we get really close on a particular month of income and outgoing bills. So I'm comfortable looking at this with other kinds of reserves that we have, the ERR and that kind of thing, that, that extra cushion means that I don't have to really analyze exactly where we are on a particular month. I'm comfortable that the funds are there. And we'll monitor it as we go through the course of the year.
But if there was some total emergency, we can't just tap that money for some other purpose without, I assume, some special approval of it?
We cannot tap the bond, we cannot tap the bond. I mean, the bond reserve, it would have to be a very significant emergency for us to be able to use the bond reserve. There is a provision for that. But we have a number of reserves that if there were an emergency, we could do a budget amendment to change what we're doing with the ERR. We could do, you know, so there are some things that we can, we can do.
So it's sort of like a protection over the ebb and flow that takes place?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we do also have a small emergency reserve and a couple other things like that.
Okay.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of started my comments earlier, and, you know, I appreciate the fact that we are thinking about reserves and going to talk about that and maybe even set some policy on what we want to do, or change a policy now that we have for the reserves. But another thing that I mentioned earlier in the budget process that I would like to see us do during the off-budget time, when we have a little bit more time and can talk about it, and that is the budget process itself. One of the things that I have found difficult through the years is being able to identify where we can really save some money, where we can kind of trim budget items. Again, as I said several weeks ago, you know, we, it's easy to identify new priorities that we want to fund, and yet it's hard to identify those things that we have funded and continue to fund year after year that maybe are of a lower priority to the current council. And so I'd like us to give some thought to how we can do that. I've suggested in the past several times through my time on the council, that we look at, that we try to align the budget more closely with programs. That has not met with great enthusiasm in the past, but I think that would be helpful in being able to identify where things are costing us money that maybe we have higher priorities today, and in which case, instead of just raising tax rates, we would be able to make cost savings that we could spend on higher priority items moving forward. Thank you.
Great. All right. All those in favor of the adopting the FY 2019 budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. There goes our voting session.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Our work session now turns to a discussion of pending grant applications, and...
We have planner Jamie Ernst, who's going to make a presentation on these.
And I think our planner, Jamie, is new to some of our council members, and so...
She was here before, I guess as an intern, but we're happy to have her back on as a real planner.
Yeah, a real planner. Welcome. We're glad to have you back.
Thank you. Good evening. So it's a brief presentation. So the city will be applying and partnering with other organizations on a couple grants, the first of which is a, the Transportation Alternatives Program administered through the State Highway Administration, and that is for design funding for the reconfiguration of the Tacoma Junction intersection. We'll then be partnering with Tacoma Park Cooperative Nursery School on a community legacy grant, as well as a National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund grant, and that is for the rehabilitation of 6530 New Hampshire Avenue. And I apologize, it's not on the memo. We were recently informed that the co-op is also interested in applying for a community legacy grant as well. And lastly, their neighborhood development company will be applying for a strategic demolition funding grant for the demolition of 7221 Carroll Avenue. And I should note that the last three grants, the community legacy grant, the National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund, and the strategic demolition fund do not require a match from the city. The Transportation Alternatives Program does require a 20% funding match.
So there is information about these various items, but basically, the Transportation Alternatives Program would be one that we would be sponsoring for ourselves through the state. The others are ones that need to go through us, and we do this on a regular basis with other businesses that are applying for state grants, that we actually kind of submit the applica, they prepare the application, we submit it for them, and you need to have a council resolution that accompanies it. But other than that, it's really kind of up to them, and these are competitive grants. So these are standard processes, and we try to let lots of businesses know that these are options for them.
Councilwoman DeBala?
Yeah. How often are these different programs open? Are they all essentially...
It's every year, that's correct.
So this is the moment?
Yes.
And then you have to wait a year?
That's right.
Because one and possibly two of these might be a little ahead of themselves. But if we can send them forward, and then if things change, we can...
Yeah, I think it takes quite a long time to get through the state process, too.
Right, so it's start now.
Right, right.
Yeah. And I'm specifically thinking about the NDC one, and then depending on what the co-op one is for.
Right, so the, oh, I apologize.
Yeah, say a little bit more about what the co-op is looking to do with the community legacy money?
Sure. And so I know for the Transportation Alternatives Program, to address your first question, so the grant is due May 16th. We won't find out if we're awarded the grant for three or four more months, so that puts us into September, so it does probably benefit us to apply for it now, and we may or may not receive it. And we might know the, a better idea of the status of those projects. And in terms of the co-op's grant application, they were interested in studying the logistics of the elevator in the new development, the loading dock, trash, parking, and traffic, is what they would intend to use the community operational, yes.
Operational issues associated with the development. Okay, great. And on the first one, do we have an idea about the amount? Are we talking about 10,000, 100,000, a million?
So the city's, it's estimated that the grant itself, so we want to go from, we're at currently 0% design, and the goal of the grant would be to get us to 100% a plan of packages with construction estimates, to put that out for bid. And so the estimate total would be about $800,000, and so the city's portion would be about $150,000 with the match.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Cierci?
So do we receive an overhead off the top of these grants?
No.
So there's no administrative, so basically we assume the cost?
Other than letting people know about them, we don't do really anything other than actually submit them in the, on the computer.
I'm sorry, was I incorrect?
That's true for the application, but we manage the grants. So in order to draw down the funds, the recipient contacts us. Generally, what happens is it's a reimbursement. The city reimburses the recipient, and then we get reimbursed from the state. So we have the oversight that the money's spent the way it's supposed to be according to the agreement, and that they can give proof of the expenditures that we track.
But we don't typically say, you know, we charge a 3% fee for the, off the total cost of your grant for performing that action?
We do not, and the state grants don't allow for that.
Okay, thanks.
Councilwoman Kostick?
Related to those questions, I'm wondering if there's a limited number of applications that we typically support or can support, or is it sort of open-ended?
To my knowledge, there is not a limited number. Perhaps Roz can speak to that.
No, and we haven't gotten very many at a time.
Okay.
People have to know pretty much what they want.
And so it sounds like the anticipation would be with the TAP grant that the funds, the matching funds would come from the city, not from SHA. Is that correct?
I think that's true. We have a lot of conversations yet to have about how this might work. And while we may have to pay, I don't know that SHA can do the contribution to it because of where it's coming from. There may be other ways and other funds that can pull into this. And we certainly have informed SHA that we're interested in pursuing this and want to work with them on it. So as best we can to not have to put our money out there, we will, although we do have some money in the FY '20 budget in the CIP related to the junction. So we, you know, we were anticipating at some point needing to spend something.
Just to clarify, that the TAP money is actually federal money that comes through the state.
Through the state, okay.
The state administers, awards those funds. So SHA, the money comes to the city from SHA if we were to be awarded it.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Yes, on that point, I'm sorry, you might have to come back up. So it's one of those cases where the state actually decides, does the feds have to sign off on it, or it's literally the state gets to make the call?
The state.
Yeah.
And we think it happens in, at the end of the year?
You were saying that it takes months?
Yeah, the grant, we would find out whether we rewarded the grant three to four months after submission, so it's due May 16th, so probably September.
Okay, so it's the current state administration that will be making that decision?
Yes.
Okay. So we... So we don't know for sure what reconfiguration we may end up supporting, right? So is the idea here that if we do decide through whatever process we come up with to do a reconfiguration, then at least we have this in the works? Is that...
Well, this is for planning money, so this helps us, helps determine the configuration. There, we may have a good idea of the concept, we may have some good direction from SHA in advance of the planning work beginning, but the actual nature of doing the planning and design work is complex and it's expensive.
I guess what I mean is, we're not yet on record as supporting a particular...
That's right.
Reconfiguration. Or in fact, a configuration.
That's right.
Depending on...
That's right.
Right. So the idea is that if we do, then we're, at least we have these funds available, right? So within that, can you, you don't have to respond now, but this question has come up a lot, and I feel like it's still floating out there, this question of widening of the roads and how making a change could potentially affect that. One of the points that's been raised by members of the community is that if there's substantial changes to the intersection, not, I think, like a lay-by and changing the lights and making certain streets one-way or changing the crosswalks, but actually, you know, creating that island, if that's what the term is, and doing other things, that that may give SHA more of an opportunity to call for widening of portions of Route 410. Is that something you can...
I don't believe that that is likely. I'm certain that the city would heavily oppose it, and there are areas where, not right at Tacoma Junction, but elsewhere along 410, where there's historic district protection that makes a lot of difference. It's a national registered district. It's not within the intersection, and it's not within the junction, but it's further down Philadelphia, so that area couldn't be widened. The other aspect, and this is just a practical one, is that the cost of that is remarkably high, even for the state. It's not something, because we have houses so close to the streets, it's just not something that is a possibility, I believe, in any way. The configurations that we have seen, studied for the junction, in no way would require widening, they don't, they will not be changing, they will not make it so easy to get through Tacoma Park that everybody will come on 410. I mean, it's just, it's just not something that would have that.
Could we maybe get, I appreciate that, could we maybe get later what the different historic districts are and what's allowed within them, just so that...
Yes. Happy to share that again.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Ernst. I apologize that I didn't hear your initial presentation. What are the dollar amounts for these requests? Do we actually know, or...
So for the TAP grant, which requires the 20% match, the estimate right now is about $800,000, and so the city's match would be about $150,000. The other three grants, the community legacy, the National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund, and the strategic demolition fund, I am not certain of the dollar amounts yet, but we will certainly get that information to you.
And the TAP grants, they still go through the Council of Governments, right? Transportation Planning Board?
Yes, and the State Highway Administration.
Okay. All right. And for the co-op's requests, do they need to have a lease or a letter of intent before they make this request, or...
I do not know the answer to that.
The short answer is, it depends on the form their application takes, and we've only had very preliminary discussions with them today. If it's capital, then they need to, typically they need a sign-off from the property owner. If it's operational, which is what they've indicated so far, then they may not need that. It's more a question of how to make the space work.
Okay.
So it depends on the shape it takes, and the capital, the community legacy grants have both a, in the past, they've had funds allocated strictly for capital purposes, and smaller, a smaller amount typically for operational. So part of the process is how to package it to most likely ensure getting support for it.
Okay. Good. I just want to say, I'm glad to see that the co-op is working to stay in Tacoma Park. You know, they've been looking for space for a long time, and there were rumors that they were going to try to leave the city. So this is good. Thank you, Ms. Ernst.
Sure. Councilwoman Searcy?
So I guess one of the questions that I have is just trying to put all the pieces together, right? Because it seems as if the NDC requests for funds, and the co-op's requests for funds, and the timing in which those funds may or may not happen may have implications for the overall progress that we might make or might not make on the junction. So one question that I have is, it's kind of hard for me to put in perspective agreeing to pursuing funds without having a clear agreement between the parties in which we're trying to solidify funds. I don't know if I'm just, you know, it's late, and my mind is just kind of, I'm just confused on how, like, the steps forward, and, you know, the timing in which we put forward, city staff time, and really trying to help push forward a grant, when I'm not 100% convinced right now that both parties are in, in terms of moving the development project forward. I don't know if that makes sense at all.
I think the, I think partly, this is the nature of almost every grant process, that you have to work within the schedules of the grants. There certainly has been some, even today, some more recent discussion about coordination among the parties, which we appreciate. There's no guarantee either any of these would get the grant. If they do, it can help things, you know, either bring down the cost of something or otherwise facilitate a better solution. So we often encourage, you know, pursuit of this as a way to help facilitate the process. Yes, I don't know exactly the timing on all of these things, but it would be terrible to miss the opportunity. So that's our issue.
No, I totally agree, and I think, you know, whenever you become aware of funding, you jump, right? But as we're kind of coming off of discussions about budget, and coming off of discussions about staff constraints, we kind of have to pick our poison, right? So it would behoove us to encourage entities that are asking us to help them do that legwork with pursuing funding, to say, okay, well, I need to at least know that our labor is not in vain. You know, it's one thing if it's in vain from the perspective of we don't secure the funding. It's something totally different to be in vain if people are not 100% committed towards, moving towards a solidified goal. So it's kind of like me getting everyone to apply for a grant to paint the streets purple, and then tomorrow, I'm saying, you know, I don't want to paint the streets at all. You know, that doesn't make sense to invest the staff time and resources into pursuing something like that. So again, I understand completely that with grant funding, it's important for us to meet the deadlines and move forward, but in discussions with all of the parties involved, I definitely want to encourage folks to get people to commit to a direction in order for us to pursue staff hours.
Right. I think that's all true. You know, part of this is our economic development efforts. It is making connections to businesses and encouraging them to invest in their facilities. The proposal for the Cooperative Nursery School to move into the vacant White Elephant Building on New Hampshire is wonderful, and, you know, so trying to help facilitate those things are good. It's hard for us to know as staff if everybody's got all their ducks in the row, and if it's something, but we are trying to do the best we can to facilitate the junction developments and improvements, and so these all kind of weave together, but yes, you're right, I don't know that we have a perfect match.
And if I would just say that each of the entities have to fill out their own application. The staff is facilitating that. I don't want to diminish the role that you're playing, and I look at it, especially now the co-op would like to apply for one, and take the time it takes to actually fill out the applications and go through this process. I'm going to put my optimist hat on and say that I'm glad to hear that they had the meeting with the staff today and heard that, and are pursuing that, as well as NDC pursuing this. For me, those are good signs that as the council is working through this process, people are still at the table wanting to work through this process, and are optimistic that we will find solutions to some of the issues that we still have outstanding.
If I can just add to clarify, in the past, when we've, when we've received community legacy grants with a partner like this, the city signs an agreement with the state that very specifically details what the budget's going to be spent on and what the scope of work is. It usually comes straight out of the application with modifications if the dollar amount is different, and the state in turn signs an agreement with the recipient with all that same information. So at that point, everybody is full in. And now, while the deadline is coming up quickly, and the information that we have tonight is not complete, it will be very clear by next week, because next week, they will be submitted by the time council is talking about this. So we will have the dollar amount, and we will have a scope of work, and we will have more information about it. And as with most grant submissions, it's fast and furious up to the deadline.
Great. All right. I think I don't see any other lights on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we're done with that. The last item we have is a discussion of resolutions setting policy regarding the level of the city's general fund, unassigned fund balance, and I just want to really say thank you. I'm glad that we are bringing this to the council right now, as the city manager knows and the finance director. This is something I've been wanting to do for a while. I have been through, over the last decade or so, three different reserve policies, not here, but helping a nonprofit I was the executive vice president of. I'm the secretary for the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments Board, and we just, as I was telling our finance director, redid our reserve policy there, and helped set a reserve policy for a professional association I was the secretary treasurer for. So the fact that we are discussing this tonight, I think is wonderful, and I just want to thank the staff so much for their hard work on this. I don't know if the city manager wanted to...
Yes, please. So the, our finance director made a presentation in October of 2017, so before three of the members were on the council, and in that, she had done quite a lot of research on, we had known the best practice that the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association has for reserve levels, but she also researched what other Maryland municipalities are doing, and looked through a variety of best practices. The recommended standard of GFOA is a minimum of two months of general fund operating expenditures. And there's a caveat that's always mentioned, which is that different jurisdictions are different, and some have higher risk, and some need a larger amount than others, and so that part of setting a policy is knowing what your jurisdiction's level of risk and needs are before setting that policy. And so it does not have to be identical to what GFOA says, but it takes those policies into consideration. In reviewing Tacoma Park's situation, we do have a higher level of risk than many other municipalities or governmental entities, and that is partly because we're so, we've got the 28% of our revenue stream that comes from county and state sources, and we depend heavily on that. That's for our day-to-day operating expenses. We have gone through times when Montgomery County and the state did not pay all their money, and one of those times happened right at budget time, and it was a surprise. So we, you know, there are times when these really hit hard, partly because we're a small entity anyway, we also recognize that purchasing large equipment or doing major financial projects required saving up for them, and so that's why we have the equipment replacement reserve and our facilities reserve. We had done quite a lot of research a number of years ago about what our day-to-day operating changes are over the course of a month, and we had had kind of a working level of $3 million. It's not appropriate to say a number, because we have inflation or different situations, and so one of the things that we went through was, is there a percent level or other thing that seems to be appropriate that deals with the size of our government and the needs of our government over time? The finance director recommended that rather than use the general, 17% or two months' worth of the general fund expenditures, that we use the revenues. Our expenditure levels change quite a bit from year to year, if you look historically. This is often because of bigger projects or different kinds of activities such as that. The revenue stays pretty stable, and if you look over the past few years, the amount that our general fund revenue has increased, it's only, it's been very flat. It goes up maybe $300,000 or $500,000 a year only, and so we've stayed in the 24 million to $25 million range for quite some time. So it does make sense for us to look at that and pick a percentage that's related to that, that's pretty common to our normal expenses and revenue fluctuation over the course of the year. When we went through and calculated that, it would mean that for FY '19, 17% of the general fund revenue would be 4.25 million, which is a modest number, and it makes a lot of sense, just for me, working with the numbers, that makes a lot of sense for our revenue amount. We do have this special case because of the bond reserve and other things for FY '19, so I'm comfortable for us not doing that, but it's really, FY '19 really is an unusual year. It's got an asterisk next to it. For the future, I think that we will be back to the, kind of a more regular approach to our projects and activities, and so I think the 17% of the general fund revenue is a really good approximation of the amount that we should have in revenues. It's also, it sounds big, but it's actually low, and it's something that I think we can be comfortable with in saying that we're not unfairly sitting on taxpayer dollars. That's the balance part when we look at reserves, and so I do feel comfortable with that. If we had gone with the general fund expenditure amount, it would be 5.4 million, and that extra million dollars, I mean, it's quite a big amount. And so my recommendation, the finance director's recommendation, is that we use the two-month, 17% amount of the general fund revenue number going forward as our guide to what that reserve of the general fund, unassigned fund balance should be. And I'm happy to answer questions, get more information for you if you need that for next week, but I would like to see that adopted.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Love Lo, for looking into this and doing so much research on it. I have to tell you, though, that my concern, as I understand it, is that the recommended minimum is 17%, which is two months of the budgeted general fund revenue amount, and that what you're proposing is that we go with the minimum that is recommended. And I don't agree that having more than the minimum is unduly burdening the taxpayers by holding their money, because I think that what we're talking about is serving the taxpayers by safeguarding the budget of the city in the future, should any adverse situations arise. And my concern is that by just having the minimum out, if a problem does come up...
I'm happy to have more than the minimum. I don't want to be on record that I just keep it at the minimum, so... Bring all the money.
My concern is, though, that if we set a policy to just maintain the minimum as the reserve, then, or the unassigned fund balance, that then if a problem does arise, and we, for some reason... and we for some reason have to cut into that, it makes the following years even more difficult because we not only have the problem that we were facing, but also the fact that we were already sitting at the minimum and we have to increase it to get back up to the minimum. So I would advocate that we, that we set a policy that's higher than the 17%. And I don't have a specific amount in mind, but like to start the discussion at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cearse?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I echo that point. And to provide a little bit of flexibility, we, we could play around with the wording. We're, you know, adopting something to the effect of at no less than recommended amount or something to that effect to kind of give us that flexibility of 17%, but that's, we could go higher.
Yes, I'm sorry. I did not mean to have this worded or give the impression that it should be really strict at that amount.
Yeah. One question that, that I have is, you know, the impacts, right? So we just finished having the discussion about the tax rate.
Right.
We just finished a discussion about the fact that, you know, we're resting on the bond amount of funds that we have. So how do we ensure that the FY '20 budget can reach the minimum, right? If, if what we're saying is that our, our goal is to keep the tax rate constant if possible, we've just voted to have it lower, does, like, how are we going to reach our recommended amount of 17%? That's, that's something that we on the council will need to, to really think about because it, it might mean cutting more line items in the budget...
Right.
Or doing what we just said we did not want to do, which is increase taxes. Now, we can, we can rest on how assessments shake out, you know? Fingers crossed, you know, everyone's house triples in value or something. I don't know. But that's, that's, that's the challenge that lies ahead. And, and I mean, again, I think it's, it's okay, you know, based on the recommendations for us to kind of rest on the bond dollars this year, but, you know, once the project is underway, the library project is underway, we really shouldn't rest on that.
Right. Well, we can't.
Yeah.
Right. The, I, it's very useful to me when I'm kind of getting my proposed budget together to know what I need that unassigned fund balance to be. The way that it tends to work is that we go through discussions with department heads about the various things that they have to have, the personnel items that, you know, what, what the health insurance is going to be and those kinds of things. And we get that, and then throw it all into the mix and see what that unassigned fund balance is. And it's always really low, and we go back and do cuts. And so part of that is, is a back and forth that has tended to be in my office, has tended to be at that first level before something would come to you, that I make sure that the amount of that unassigned fund balance is large enough. I would do that again, but I think that, you know, especially because we've gone through kind of an unusual year, we've got the triennial assessment coming up that we will get the results of in, in February, that those discussions could happen and should start happening about in February. And I think, you know, it's hard to do it before then because we really don't have some data, but I think that, you know, the, the request by the council, most of you, many of you are just doing it the first time and kind of getting to see what, what it looks like to go through this process, that we'll be able to have better discussions early on about what the implications are of some of the decisions, about how big the reserve fund should be and, and what does that mean for cuts, for programs, and then again for the tax rate. I do think it's going to take a little bit to get, to get this into the system so that we can have a stable tax rate and, and that kind of thing. So there may be a year or two where we don't quite make it to the 17%. Or there may be some other way that we, we take a really hard hit next year because we know we're getting there. It's the balance process that happens with budgets. But I really would like to have that as a, as a cooperative project that we look at.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Dibala?
Yeah. Thank you for, both, both of you for all the work. So I, I was sitting in the audience in October, and, and at the time I had some questions, and now I get to ask them.
Look at that.
How about that? So I think it's, I think it's, I really would like to set a policy, and, and I also like the fact that, that there's a way to adjust if there's a, like, for example, if we need to ease into it over a couple of years since 17% is so much more than what we've got now. Is there somewhere in these materials a, a chart that says how much we've put into the general reserve fund by percentage over the past few years?
No, but that'd be great. We'll look at that for you.
Yeah, so that would be helpful because I know it's not 70%.
We, we did, we did look at it and we did some comparisons, but, but not exactly that way, and so I think that could be useful.
Right. So I'm looking at the comparisons with the other communities that got handed out on...
Right.
...in October. And my, so my other question has to do with equipment reserves and facility reserves. Does the 17%, two questions. Does the 17% standard practice, does that assume that, 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 that any government has a separate equipment and facility reserve, or does it assume that the 17% includes equipment and facilities?
Neither.
Neither?
So many, many...
Okay.
Many communities don't have an equipment replacement reserve. We're very unique in that.
So that's great that we have that.
So that's great that we have. I mean, that is one of the reasons that I didn't freak out at the 2.6 million. It's a recognition that we're a small entity, and so we have that in place. Most jurisdictions don't. Many jurisdictions have a lot more money than we do. And so they just pay for stuff out of cash and they just, you know...
Sure.
And so, so, so part of this is that, that it's not an apples-to-apples comparison across jurisdictions. It's the best we could do.
So, so what we have across jurisdictions is, as you say, not apples-to-apples, but for this, for the Government Finance Officers Association, for their recommended 17%, what, what do they assume is in the general fund?
They don't, they don't really...
They don't spell out.
They don't spell out. And, and that is because they want you to make that determination. So, so part of the GFOA is to ensure that, that, that a council and senior staff think about what the reserve should be and, and the level of risk for that particular jurisdiction. So it's, it's a, it's a standard, but it has all kind of asterisks that you have to think about.
Yeah, and I think if you, if you look on the website for the GFOA, I mean, it basically says there's no one-size-fits-all. It's, takes, you have to take into consideration each locality and your risk and all that other stuff. So they're very explicit that there's no one-size-fits-all.
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I want to thank you, Ms. Ludlow, for doing this. This is something that the council has talked about for a long time. It's good that, you know, things that we bring up actually come before us and we can vote on them. So I, I want to go on the record and say that I think the 17% should be the floor, not the ceiling.
Okay.
And give you some leeway on what you think is the best practice going forward. If you think we have more money, then we put more money into the reserve. Now, looking at the other communities, is this a policy for them, or are they just kind of, you know, just rolling?
Many of them, many of them have the policy of adopting the GFOA standard about the general fund expenditures level. Many of them don't meet it, and some of the jurisdictions don't have a policy.
Okay. All right. And so I saw that our friends, Gaithersburg, they have a whole bunch of money.
Gaithersburg doesn't borrow money, they just save it.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. And they like to tell me that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Culver?
Thank you. One question, following up on an earlier question, thank you for all the information. Can we get the, what all the totals of the different reserves are that we have, the ones that we have control over? I mean, I think to the extent that, you know, the cable piece is separate and we can't really use that, but the ERR and the facilities management, just so we know what the total amount is, even though I understand that's not what we're talking about in this case. And maybe it's in there somewhere.
Right. I'll, I'll just call your attention to the general fund fund balance projection, which is in your package. It's the only one that's kind of the other direction, the landscape version. It tells the balance in, in many of the different, in, in the different reserves.
Okay.
For this year.
Well, what's in there? I mean, they, they don't disappear.
Oh, what's in, what's in there? Sorry.
Okay, I see. Okay. So kind of philosophically, do you, to what extent do you sort of see the, the purpose of the unassigned reserves as being to smooth out the, the waviness versus to really be used when there's some sort of emergency? I mean, I don't know, you know, an earthquake strikes Lago Creek and we have to put, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars into that, or whatever the equivalent of that would be.
Right.
What sort of, which of those purposes is, is there? And does that even include something like, hey, you know, the feds passed a tax law and so we kind of need to shift things a little bit that year or some version of that? So how do you see that?
I see the unassigned fund balance as unassigned. So it, it's a little bit, it is the day-to-day operations more than emergencies. We have an emergency reserve of $464,000. We have, we have some other kinds of small reserves that don't count as reserves, but some small amounts of money. You know, we could have a discussion that maybe we need more in terms of emergencies. We have some flexibilities when there's emergencies, but it's a really important topic to, to go through.
But an emergency reserve isn't assigned exactly, right? But it's, it's for emergencies, but in unspecified way, right?
That's right.
And that's up to...
It's, it's up to you guys to decide when it's to be used, yeah.
So I think the numbers you're talking about then for the current year, which is lower than you want, and we, and we understand that and appreciate that, is $2,600,000, right?
Correct.
And then for next year, assuming things stayed about the same, be $4 million?
Yeah, about 4.2 million.
$250,000. So that's an increase of 1.65 million. That's an estimate, but...
That's right.
So we were able to pull it together to cut the budget by about, you know, $500,000 this year when we had it back in the money for the Flower Avenue-Green Street. But, you know, that, so that, but that would represent either a, an increase in taxes of...
Like four cents.
Four cents, or finding $1.65 million to cut. So that strikes me as pretty difficult, given what we went through recently, and we also have a couple of positions that'll be more full-time maybe than they were before.
That's right.
So one of the things I would ask and see what my colleagues think about also is, if we set 17%, do we have to get it all in the first year? And I think you said we might not, but...
Correct.
I, I don't, I don't think we really would be able to do that all in one year. So if we're going to set that as a target, I'd like to have us phase it in.
Well, and that's, I mean, I think that, that's fine, and you can either say that as a whereas clause in the resolution, or it can simply be part of your explanation next year when you do the budget.
I think by setting it at the 17, this is a question for the city manager, by said, by doing it this way and setting it at the 17%, what it says to me is that what we're prioritizing in the budget for next year. And so when you approach the budget, as you said before, you're going to look at, okay, how can we approach that?
That's right.
And you would come back to us with saying...
I wouldn't have you have to cut a million dollars' worth of a proposed budget to get the reserve. I would come in with the reserve at the right amount, and then you might say, gee, but we want to do some extra stuff. Or you might want to cut something that we're, as, as Councilmember Siemens talked about, that we've been doing and we don't have this high priorities for.
Right. But, but right now, if nothing else changed, and I know it depends on the assessments too, but there would be a, there would be a potential significant tax increase, right, to, to achieve this?
Yes. It, it's more money. Yeah. That's, that's part of the reason I wanted a tax increase this year, is part of the reason I didn't want a big tax decrease for FY '18 because of the reserves. But I agree, it's going to, it, it's, it's a big lift. I just think it's the right thing to do.
Councilmember Kostick?
Thank you. So I also had several other questions that were already asked. I was interested in comparing two percentages from previous years, so that would be really helpful to get, as well as the impact of the equipment and facility reserve funds and kind of how that fits into the bigger picture of that percentage.
Right.
I'm interested in exploring a little bit how, what the impact is of tying this to the revenue instead of the expenditures, particularly because I was looking back to make sure I was right about this, and the general fund revenues do also include the intergovernmental revenues.
I know.
So if we're setting it based on that and those drop for some reason, or we don't have what we need there, how does that impact our levels and, and our kind of safety in terms of keeping that reserve level we need?
I think that it's, it's, it's less, to me, you could pick a higher number than 17%, but still to stick it to the reserves because the reserves have more of a stability and are more associated with our day-to-day operations. The expenditures, the numbers bounce all over the place, and if, if we ended up taking 17% of a year when we had more expenditures because we all of a sudden had more need on something, then it's going to hurt us even, then the tax rate really goes up. I mean, so, so part of it is trying to think about that balance. But you're exactly right. I mean, part of the reason that, that we have, I have this concern is, is the proportion of the interjurisdictional revenue.
So when, if we were looking forward at the budget, would we necessarily know that there would be a reduction in those, those revenues?
Usually we do. Usually we do. You know, we, we had one really bad year when we didn't have very much notice, but they have been pretty consistent. If I felt like, if I felt that that was very volatile, I wouldn't recommend it.
Okay. And then it seems to me if we did anticipate that the intergovernmental revenues would decrease, we might actually want to potentially increase our level to a higher level than the 17%.
That's right. And that would be a really important discussion to have.
Okay. Okay. I think that's it for now.
Thank you.
All right. We're going back around again. Councilwoman Cearse and then Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city manager. So in thinking in terms of budget formulation work that you all will do, is it, I would assume that it's easier for you to hit the target when you know what the target is prior to starting formulation?
Oh, yes.
So, you know, setting that minimum, even though we as a council may decide that, hey, we don't want to cut, we're, we're looking at the budget and some of our projects aren't there, or they're being delayed, or, or the like, and we may decide to kind of lower, you know, lower the threshold from that minimum. I think what we're proposing here is, that's okay, as long as we justify the fact that that's what we're trying to do, correct?
That you reckon, you acknowledge it, yeah.
Right. And I think that's something that's important. I think it needs to be, as the mayor mentioned, a priority for the council, especially when we're talking about other priorities. It should be a component of that fiscally responsible, you know, kind of priority that we have, and that we use this as a way to kind of set some parameters around our aspirational goals, right? So I think that's, that's going to be really, really important. I also think that in terms of the phase up, I don't know if we would necessarily need to write that in the resolution, as long as we set what we at least believe the floor to be. I think that might be sufficient. But I think as we're having work sessions around the FY '20 budget, that we are kind of working through some scenarios of this is how we could, because we're not going to be able to get in, get there in one fiscal year. It's something that we're going to have to work towards in a few fiscal years unless we want to increase taxes. We basically want to go to what you proposed this year from where we just set. So it's, it's going, and if we want to be, keep the rate constant, depending on how assessments come back, it might take an even longer amount of time for us to phase up to 17%. I, I don't know if that makes sense, but...
No, it does. I mean, I think it'll, it will, you know, it, we never know till we see the numbers.
So, I mean, I think one thing... So, I mean, I think one thing that would be an action item, not just for you, but for us as well, is when we're starting to have these priority discussions, we are prioritizing the reserve level. And then as we are having discussions around the FY '20 budget, especially because now you have the floor and you kind of set the prior, you know, set the stage that way, then we can be in a better position to say, okay, if we are proposing new things or asking why certain things are not in the budget or not being funded, provide the justification.
Right.
If we want to move in any way, even the phased-in amount. So let's say we decide as a council next year that we want to phase up to 17% in the reserves over the next eight years. Making it up. Then what is the scenario that we would need to hit in order to get to that point?
Yeah.
And then as a council, we would need to kind of hold ourselves to it. The only way we're going to be able to phase up to that would be based on current level numbers. If everything stays the same, the only way we're going to get to 17% in eight years, holding the tax rate, keeping everything the same, is this is, this is our operating budget, and this is how we would get there.
Right.
I don't know if that makes sense or if that's feasible.
No, it does. I mean, you know, one of the things too is that in FY '20, I do anticipate some additional revenue sources coming to the city. So that's, that's the other, that's the other thing that's positive that we have to look forward to.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I just encourage my colleagues to not be so fixed on the 17% number right now. It's actually 17 and a half, but even that is, I don't think, adequate for where we want to be or where we should strive to be. But I agree that it's going to take time to get to the proper level, so I think we should think about setting a minimum that is more appropriate for municipality that has high-risk, high-risk revenues, as the city manager pointed out to us. But I just also wanted to mention that when we're thinking about policies, it's not just setting a minimum, but also a policy for when can we use that money? And I believe the city manager mentioned that earlier.
Yeah.
But also a policy for how do we maintain that fund so that after we do reach the level, and as you said, we have a, have some kind of a policy about how do we get there in the beginning, but we also need to say something about if we do spend it down, you know, what is our policy about refunding that?
Those are good suggestions.
To get it back up to the minimum level. And those are things that should be stated in the policy. And I say that because we're not all going to be here, you know? And we at least want to try to push the future councils in the right direction. Thank you.
And with that, I would just say that one thing I'd like to see is a whereas clause that says that the city council needs to review this policy every three years and have a work session on it. Because I do think actually, looking at, you know, the GFO recommendations and everything, that, you know, we're striving for stability, things change, as Councilmember Smith talked about, in the region and other things. So I think it's always good to have it in our policies that we must review it. And I think with that, we're at...
Oh, no, I can, I can...
Oh, are you sure?
I have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Since we're going around one more time. So we were hoping to see the percentage of reserve set aside by year. Have there been any years where you've spent it down big time?
No. No, we've been careful about it. We spend some as through budget amendments, but we try not to spend it down.
So another piece of information that would be useful is if there are years in which some significant amount of money got spent down.
I think another way of looking at it too is also, like, the purpose of the reserves is really to think...
Is to not do that.
Is not to do that, because if something happened, this is the money we need to tap into so that we can basically keep the doors open and that we can pay people and do all that. So it's also, that's the purpose, like, of making sure we have this.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. I just wanted to see if that was the case in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes we actually spend some of the emergency reserve.
Just a quick question. During the Great Recession, when we had to lay off people, how were the reserves impacted?
We actually, we didn't cut into the reserves too much, we laid off people.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Kovar, would you like...
Yes, so just a question. Now, I know this is just a work session, but we're planning to vote...
Next week.
On this next week. So I think a number of people on the dais have said that they recognize we probably couldn't get there in the first year. And to me, if that's true, then there ought to be some language making that clear, because otherwise we're just with this announcing to people that we're increasing their tax by four cents next year. And so if we know that we can't do it, I would like to make it clear that...
Well, I would say, I would actually, but we can add that, but I would say it specifically says here, a statement will be made identifying the special situ, the last whereas clause, I think, if I'm reading it correctly, says that we, there may be situations where not doing this. So it is not a given.
Right, but, I mean, I just heard the majority of people say, oh, that's definitely going to happen. That doesn't sound like a special situation. That sounds like we know we're probably not going to do it. So I just think if we don't think we're going to do it, we ought to say that and say we're going to try to do it in three years.
All right, so let's do a show of hands, how many would like to add a whereas clause that specifies a phase in of the reserve?
See, four.
Four, okay.
In that, I would really like it more than $3 million floor, just because of the day-to-day operations. So I just, a friendly amendment to that whereas clause.
Yeah, can I, can I clarify before I, maybe before, I will change my vote. My, my understanding of what this would say was that whereas, we anticipate that there will be a phase-in period where we may not be able to achieve this 17%, but that will be our goal, not, not specific numbers.
See, I would not say our goal is 17% because what I've heard from other folks is that that's the floor and we want to exceed that. And so that's why I didn't vote for the whereas clause, because I think it's already implied in here that our goal is to get to 17%, no less than, I think it was said, to 17%. And I think it gives us enough flexibility that if we can't do it next year, to say why we're not doing that. But I would like us with the assumption going into our budget next year that we want to see if we can get to no less than 17% in the reserve. For me, that's where I was.
So about if I circulate something later to everybody, which would be a proposal?
Please do.
And then we can decide.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you had four votes, so it's fine.
Because I, we can't, I don't think we can do it right on the fly right now, but...
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. You can do it up till right before we vote.
No, I'll do it sooner than...
All right. Then with that, we are done. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.